This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
We're at 6:02. We'll begin with the pleasure of the agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should say, I'm Paul Mayo, I'm council president, I'm filling in for the mayor tonight who is not feeling well. So, I will also inform everybody I'll be voting as a member of the council. Sandy will read the open meeting, Stephen.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks Sandy, will you call the roll, please?
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Proczadzki.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks Sandy. Next up, we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda is consisted of items that, numerous items that we vote on all at once. If there's anything that council or staff would like removed from the consent agenda and put on the regular agenda for consideration, now is the time to make that request. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, we have non-agenda items and announcements. Oh, yeah, we do. Okay, sir, sorry. Sorry?
Just follow your script.
Follow my script, alright. Next, we have the regular agenda. I don't think we have any handouts, do we? Okay. I would then need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
O moved.
Second.
Second by Whitman, I'm sorry, motion by Whitman, second by Olson, to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Now, we have non-agenda items and announcements. The first is an announcement or a presentation of the 2015 Annual Library Report by Library Board Chairperson John Ryan. John, you're up.
Good. Thank you, Paul, members of the council, and city staff. I'm John Ryan, I'm currently the chair of the Board of Trustees of the library, and I'm here tonight to present the 2015 Annual Report, and also to give you a glimpse at the strategic five-year plan that we worked out over the course of last year. The annual report is submitted to the state every year. It includes statistics collected by library staff and through OWLS, the Outagami-Wapaka Library System. Late 2014, we formed a committee of library staff, library board members, and city representatives. Many of you are here tonight, and thank you for your participation. We were facilitated by Connie Abear from the Wisconsin UW Extension. And one of the first things we did was to establish clarified values, as well as statements of vision and mission. The process also included the identification of issues that the community faces and the identification of stakeholders. We sought the involvement of the community in the development of strategies, and then we prioritized solutions. And the goals that you see here were chosen from the issues that were identified during the course of the process. And the completed plan is available on the library website. I'll start with the annual report by illustrating the statistics so that it'll help you understand the services that we provide. While the city of Wapaka has just over 6,000 people, the service population also includes the four townships that surround the city, as well as residents from Portage and Waschira County who use our library. That brings the service population up to about 18,000 and encompasses an area roughly equivalent to the service area of our school district. The library is regularly open six days a week for a total of 56 hours a week. Average daily visits are just over 468 people, with an average checkout of 900 items a day. As you can see, the residents of the city of Wapaka are the group that checks out the most items, but the surrounding townships also borrow their share. Wapaka and Waschira Counties reimburse the city for the use of the library by their residents. People in the community are big borrowers and enjoy the convenience of being able to get materials through delivery that's provided by OWLS, the Outagami-Wapaka Library System. And our library also provides a corresponding number of items to neighboring libraries. As you can see, it's pretty even. Over 100,000 items going in and out of the back door. Over one-third of the items checked out were to children and teens. One of the library's goals is to advance literacy by providing individuals and families with the tools they need to be successful. Whether looking for employment, obtaining forms for their taxes, keeping up with family and friends, or using online banking services, our computers allow access. We actually have 28 computers for patron use and two iPads that are available for use by children and families in the children's department. For the last few years, we've been running out of bandwidth, but OWLS advocated on our behalf in 2015, and our bandwidth was doubled. And then, in early 2016, the library received another upgrade that brings us up to 15 megabits per second. And this was granted through the State Teach Program at no additional cost to us. Teach is the Technology for Educational Achievement. It's administered by the Wisconsin Department of Administration, Division of Enterprise Technology, and they subsidize much of the cost to provide telecommunications access to eligible schools, libraries, and educational institutions. The way people use our library is changing. We've got more access to Wi-Fi and affordable devices, and our patrons are taking advantage of the Wisconsin Digital Library. The downloads continue to increase. This year, we added a weekly program to help patrons with those digital devices. We call it Tablet Time, and it's held every Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Our library helps to fund the electronic books and audiobooks that are available to all Wisconsin residents with a library card, with the cost to our library at about 29 cents per download, well under the cost of a cup of coffee or just about anything. While the library provides materials, it's ultimately a service organization. Our staff help community members find the right resources, whether for entertainment or educational purposes. We select, order, receive, and process new materials. Almost 6,000 new items were added in 2015. Library staff are highly trained to use technology, and that allows them to help patrons, but there are often, very often, technical questions. In 2015, we had 15.13 full-time equivalents. That's seven full-time staff and 20 part-time staff, as well as cleaning and building personnel, building maintenance personnel, I should say. Advocacy efforts in the last few years have resulted in support from Wapaka County at 100% of the cost of providing service to the rural patrons who choose to use our library. As county residents, they pay for library services through their Wapaka County tax bill. Residents of Waschira County also use our library, and Waschira County is billed accordingly. And it's true again that the current city dollars budgeted for the library is less than was budgeted in 2010 or 2011. Programs are held for all ages. This past year, we added adult programming, including the Tablet Time that I mentioned, Book to Art, and a Cookbook Club. Summer reading programs were offered for all ages, and the prizes were books. The Library Foundation and the Book Fest Committee held a book festival in 2015. Authors made visits to the schools, were included in a reception, and brought people of all ages together for a very full day last April in this building. The 2015 Wapaka Book Fest was supported by Room Tax money, fundraising efforts, and a grant from the Wisconsin Humanities Council. But you really can't tell the library's story with just numbers. In 2015, we had a theme of celebrating heroes. Kids became superheroes when they flew above buildings or emerged from a phone booth. Try explaining the need for a phone booth to a six-year-old. We held programs about insect heroes, the bees. Kids and families had the opportunity to be heroes by growing a monarch caterpillar, tagging and launching the butterfly that emerged. We celebrated everyday heroes. Our patrons wrote and shared their stories on our hero wall. We had Eleanor Roosevelt visit and have tea with the community. Our firefighter heroes and police heroes, along with a hero dog, talked to kids about their work. We promoted literacy to all ages with a summer reading program for over 700 participants. The early literacy play area was improved with the addition of an interactive wave wall that provides an opportunity for parents to sing, play, talk, and rhyme with their kids. Technological literacy was the focus of some of our programs. A computer rebuild for teens, the Tablet Time for adults, and we were using something called Osmo, that's an iPad program that allows interaction to teach literacy skills. And we also sponsored an hour of code writing for all ages. We use the principles of STEAM, an acronym standing for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, to have fun at the library while continuing to learn when school was not in session. The final entry in the annual report includes a statement from the library board addressing the support that OWLS provides to our community. And it reads as, I'll read that to you. "In 2015, OWLS provided a report on our library facility, which outlined steps that the library could take to improve services to our community. OWLS advocated for a second increase in bandwidth and assisted in providing background work for tablet-style catalog stations. Library staff regularly utilizes the expertise of OWLS staff to work on projects and answer questions as they come up. The technology support and continuing educational opportunities allow our employees to keep current in an ever-changing environment. And in addition, our library system provides leadership opportunities for Wapaka library staff." Just to give you a quick glimpse into the future, the library will be getting a facelift. Probably already smelled the paint. We're planning for new carpet and paint, provided through the city's capital projects fund. And the Library Foundation will be financing a new main desk, displays, self-checkout stations, tablet-based catalog stations, and the reupholstering of chairs. Thanks very much for your attention. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have a presentation of the 2015 Annual Police Department Report by Commissioner Jim Schultz. Jim, do you need PowerPoint?
No, thank you. Good evening, and thank you, members of the council, Mr. Velikar, Sandy, guests, and Mayor Smith, who I assume is watching at home on Win TV.
I would think.
Okay, and I trust that you have the annual report in front of you, it was distributed. I've been asked to walk through that and highlight a few areas, we'll do that. We like to think of Wapaka as a low-crime area. Good news is, it is. Still, if you take a look at, look ahead to page five on that annual report, but you'll see, if you haven't already seen it in the local paper or heard it on the local radio station, 2015, we experienced some serious burglaries, armed robberies. More often than not, these crimes prove to be drug-related or drug-motivated. In 2015, the Wapaka Police Department worked with the Department of Criminal Investigation and the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force to solve a string of serious crimes in and around the city of Wapaka. And it sends a pretty important message. This is not really a good place to commit a serious crime. Because Wapaka is not immune to a nationwide heroin epidemic, it continues to be a factor right here and in the surrounding area. Now, the information in the chart on page six of this report show that theft and misuse of prescription drugs are an issue of equal concern to law enforcement, as is heroin. Prescription drugs in your home are a potential danger if you don't have control over everybody that comes into your home, and almost none of us do. On page seven of the report, you'll see the types and amounts of illicit drugs that were removed from circulation in our community by your police department. And I'm sure I'm not the only one who will be surprised by that. Wapaka PD and the Wapaka Community Health Action Team, along with other community leaders, including doctors, nurses, and citizens, have been working together to contain this problem. Wapaka Police Department continues to be active in the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force, which was developed so that departments can cooperate across multiple jurisdictions. The task force formulates plans to combat drug trafficking area-wide. It has been successful and continues to be so, in part because of the participation of the Wapaka Police Department. One line of the police department's mission statement says, "We recognize that the primary purpose of our organization is not only the skillful enforcement of the law, but the delivery of humanitarian services which promote community peace." I like that line. And that's why on pages nine and 10, you'll see that our department is involved in numerous education and service programs in our community. Our Facebook page provides safety and crime information via social media. There's Shop with a Cop, Secret Santa, to name a couple of others. Officers from the Wapaka PD took part in a number of events during the year, including a fun book night, a bike safety rally, a health fair. There was information on internet safety. Other programs included pedestrian safety, residential security, financial scams, how to spot them and avoid them. All of these events were well-attended. They included citizens from preschool through senior citizen. Our police department has become a resource for information, which is building relationships within the community. Rise Together is another program which offers support services and professional help for people affected by drug problems, not just drug users and drug dealers, but their families. On pages 11 and 12, you see that Sergeant Grassef has describes the ongoing training and activities that the Wapaka County SWAT team goes through. Now, there was a time when I first moved here, none of us would have believed that Wapaka would ever need to be a part of a unit like SWAT. Times have changed. I, for one, am grateful. Page 13 and 14 demonstrates the proactive stance our department takes in our schools. Building relationships and trust at an early age can prevent more serious problems down the line. Solid information presented in a positive way deals with tobacco and alcohol use, drug abuse, bullying, cyberbullying, internet safety, truancy, and the importance of respect for yourself, your classmates, your school, your teachers, your community, and the police. The 2015 budget for the department, if you look at page 15, was $1,005,000-plus. The budget is broken down into seven different areas or programs. The table depicts the actual budget for the specific, each of the specific programs last year in 2015, and for the first time in my memory, the police department came in over budget by 2.58%. Overall, you'll find that Wapaka's reported crime rate went down by about 20% from the year before, based on uniform crime reporting stats, primarily due to a decrease in thefts and a small reduction in reported burglaries. On the whole, police calls, citations, and arrests went down by a fraction of a percent. Criminal arrests were down by 4%, citations went down by 14.5%. Overall property loss due to theft was down over 18%. Recovered stolen property, the stuff they get back from the bad guys, is about 49%, almost half, which is considerably higher than either state or national averages for recovered goods. Wapaka Police Department is presently at full staff. Last year, our officers received training, including emergency vehicle operation, firearms training, heroin abuse investigation, changes in the law, death investigation, and more training consistent with the needs of a modern department. Among the newest technology, our officers also received training in the use of body cameras. The last page of your report includes a list of all of our police department personnel. One name on that list will change this year as the commission will begin to search for a new police chief due to the retirement of Chief Gilk. Thank you for your attention, and if you have any questions, if they pertain to spelling or grammar, I will answer them. Otherwise, I will demure to Chief Gilk. If not, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Jim. Alright, next on the agenda is public input. If anybody has any public input, any input on a non-agenda item, it's council or staff or anybody in the audience has any input on a non-agenda item, please step to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Anybody? Okay, we'll move on to department announcements and reports, and we'll start with Kathy.
Thank you, council president. Tonight, I did not have anything in the packet because I've spent the last week with the auditors on our final audit meeting, and continued to work on closing the books. So, hopefully, right now, we're scheduled for the second meeting in May for them to present the audit to council. So, otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thanks Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, Peg.
Thank you. We have a lot going on at the library, as usual. Our exhibit room now has the Youth Art Month, and it's really amazing how much talent is within this community and how they can bring it all together to be a really interesting show. Next exhibit is the Peeps Show, and we're looking for exhibitors. So, if you want to get together with your family and friends and make a peep diorama, we have some instructions and some applications on our website. We also have a couple of events associated with an upcoming exhibit. And we have a family paint, and that is on a Saturday in April, the first Saturday, second Saturday in April. And that's for kids and their parents to come and actually experience creating art. And then, we have a wine and canvas program that we're going to be talking about a little later in our agenda, and that's for adults only. And we're going to be serving wine along with having an instructor walk us through a painting. So, there'll be tickets available at the library as soon as we get the liquor license to make that happen. We also are in the midst of our I Did a Read, so all of our readers in the community are mushing along with the mushers and trying to beat their mushers to the finish line by reading a certain number of minutes every day. And so, we have a lot of attendance with that. It's available for all ages, you can still get in on that fun if you want to. Also, March is Women's History Month, and we are celebrating Strong Women = Strong World. And we have a couple of upcoming events. We have the Helen Keller Luncheon on Saturday. There are still tickets available. All you have to do is call or stop in at the library, and we can get you signed up for that. And we'll be serving a light lunch along with listening to a presentation by Jessica Mitchna, who will come as Helen Keller. And then, we also have a book discussion on the book Lean In, and that's going to take place at the end of the month. And we hope you'll stop in at the library and see all the great things that are going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Peg. Any questions for Peg? Okay, Development Director Brennan.
Thanks, Paul, and members of council. Just a brief update, last week, the Art Summit was a success. I want to thank Henry, and Kathy and Erin also participated in that event, and all the members that, and groups that attended that. We had just under 100 people there, which I thought was a success for the Art Summit. Definitely an engaging time and a lot of ideas that were created from that. Paul, as well, thank you for the opening notes for the summit as well. Thank you. Just a couple of projects that are in my report that was sent out on Monday. The Plan Commission did approve Bonnie's Bloomers, which is Bonnie Tim. Many of you may know her as one of the former owners of Silver Mist. She has split off and is doing her own greenhouse that'll be located out by Foxfire Golf Course on Highway 54 and Foxfire Drive on the parcel that was owned by the bank. That is anticipated to start construction here shortly. Now, with a greenhouse going up in April, and her building going up starting in June. So, that project is moving forward. And Cavalier Church is, received site plan approval for expansion onto their facility as well.
Thanks, Brennan.
Yep.
Any questions for Brennan? Okay, we'll move on to Public Works Director Justin Behrens.
Thank you, Paul. My packet's on page 21 and 22. Starting with the wastewater side of it, the staff down at the treatment plant kind approached me. We're looking to do a little project with cooking grease waste and using that in our digester. Their plan, their idea is to basically reduce our dependency on outside fuel to heat the plant and hopefully eliminate it. But we'll see, we're trying to, I guess, just work on and become more efficient with it. Sent out a proposal, request for proposal on our grower control study. That'll be coming forward in April on our findings and what we're looking to do. That'll be coming forward in April on our findings and what we're looking to do. Our aeration blower upgrade project, we'll be seeking approval for that later tonight as the focus on energy money needs to, basically need a sign-off to commitment of that by the 17th. The street side of it, outside of the routine stuff, it seems like the snow is gone for good for the, until fall. That just jinxed it? Our sidewalk replacement project, we, with the help of Sandy, we should be bringing that forward in April with the public notifications. Waterside, Mark finished the DNR and the Public Service Commission reports, the annual reports. I'll be getting, working on the consumer confidence report, and I should have that end, or done by the end of the month and published and distributed to the public. We had a main break on Churchill several weeks ago. I bring it up just because the crews worked really hard. It could have been, a lot of people thought water for a long time, but basically got the break fixed within a few hours, and a lot of people on Churchill Street, you know, were out of water for just only several hours. The well rehab project, the contractor submitted the permit to the DNR. They were thinking they're going to get started on it by the end of the month. A little update on that today was they should get started on it probably early April, but that is progressing along. And on the facility side, as you can see, the paint's going. They're going, moving right along upstairs on City Hall, should be switching over to the library side pretty soon. The HVAC, we're kind of looking at some options on how to handle that. Henry and I and Russ have been working on that, should be able to bring something forward in the next couple meetings. And with the help of Russ, we followed up on some outreach to the public on removing dead and dangerous trees within the community. Had some pretty good success with people actually removing trees that are on their property, but could be deemed as a public nuisance. So thumbs up for Russ on helping with that. And he also helped out at PD, had a couple false alarms, just troubleshooting that, scheduling some maintenance and getting the bugs worked out on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions for Justin? Okay, we have Park and Rec Director, Aaron Jensen.
Thank you. We're going to start out by just giving a quick update on the Parks and Cemetery crew person position. We did have 48 applicants. We're in the middle of the interview process. We're very happy with the interest in that position. We interviewed six candidates, and we are interviewing three. We're bringing three back for a second round interviews. Three very, very strong candidates, and we look forward to filling that position very shortly. Active Net, we've been working on that. Want to thank Josh Werner for all of his work with some troubles that we've had with card readers. We've had some card readers that are not working. He's working with the manufacturers on getting us up and running there. Bolt Landing, RFP, that has been sent out about two or three weeks ago. Our bid opening, well, at least three weeks ago, our bid opening is this Friday at 2:00 PM. So you will be seeing something come to Park Board first and then coming forward to council as a recommendation there. Smoking, I did want to give a quick update on this. We are working with sixth grade class and Alan Konda, who is the teacher of that class. We're going to be having them make a banner, and they're going to be working with us, get transported to South Park in early May when we open our parks. May 1st is when we open shelters and bathrooms and open rentals and such, and that's when we're going to plan to unveil some signs as well, the young lungs at play, and expand that throughout the park system rather than just Swan Park and some more of the popular places that we're at now. So I want to thank Mr. Konda for his cooperation and also Ben Reom and the school administration for agreeing to transport the kids and kind of making a deal of it, and we, and Angie will be there that day as well. Family Trivia Night, we had that on Friday, this last Friday night. Rocky Mondello did a little trivia night from 6:30 until 8:00 PM. Kids and families were given some free pizza from Little Caesar's. We were hoping for a little better turnout. We had in between 30 and 35 people. I think last year, the weather was cold, and we were thinking it would be this year, but it's a good thing that it's warm, but it kind of hurt us, I think, with all the nice weather, people wanting to be outside. So we'll look to continue that next year and promote it a little more and try to get more interest. Serenity Park Sign, Serenity Park is the park that the senior center and the seniors have worked towards fundraising-wise, right by the rec center there along the river. We had looked at us to do a sign. I want to thank Steve Hackett came up with this idea. He knew that we had a sign that was quoted at about $1,800 for a Wood Park sign to resemble the others. That is something we didn't feel like was a necessary expense. Steve said, "Hey, why don't you work with Dave Larson over there? Those kids are pretty talented in the tech ed department." And Dave was willing to work with us, and they are going to be making a sign and probably have it done sometime in May. So thank you, Steve. I think that was a great idea. It's going to be, so far, it's going to be at no cost, or might be some materials that he asked for, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. Active Shooter Training's the last thing I want to touch on. Thank you, Tim, for that, and Sergeant Grassefa, who came over to the rec center last week, I believe it was, and we did a training for about an hour from 2:30 to 3:30 on a day last week, just kind of went over some of the things that you should do if that, heaven forbid, if that ever happened. And then I'm going to be going through the building and marking some safe areas and things like that that Sergeant Grassefa suggested. So, thank you, guys, for that, and that is all I have.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Okay, Police Chief, Tim Goke.
Thank you. As Mr. Schultz indicated in the packet is my letter of retirement after 30 years. We did meet and discuss it at our PFC meeting, and the plan is that they are going to be appointing an interim chief during, once I leave, and then begin the process, probably starting discussions in June, with entire, with anticipated placement in October, depending on funding and whatnot. A couple of things have been coming up now that spring is here with the snow melt. We've had a number of instances where people are calling us, reporting needles, hypodermic needles. If those are ever found by anyone, we do respond and collect them. We do have staff that is trained on how to recover them safely and dispose of them. We do have a contract for proper disposal. They can't go in the trash. So we, we do take care of disposal on public property. Private, we do not respond to private property. That would have to be a separate vendor, but any needles located in a public area, please call the police, and we will respond and take care of that in a safe manner. Another thing that has come up several times in the last few weeks are refrigerators, for some reason, that are being trashed or put out for disposal. The doors have to be removed. People don't realize that every refrigerator door has to be removed because if it doesn't have the old locking-style door, it has a vapor seal, and those vapor seals can cause death very quickly due to lack of oxygen and oxygen, lack of oxygen. So we do have an ordinance, and we are enforcing that actively, so please, if you see a refrigerator out with a door on, call us right away. We will take care of that also. Other than that, it's informational.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief Goke? Jim, step up to the podium, please.
Do I need to reintroduce myself?
No.
No. Okay, I'm sorry. My question was, you mentioned that the police will respond to hypodermic needles in public places. Is there information, safety information, available for people who do find them on private property? Any education available?
There's a host of resources on the internet. I know Waste Management does it, but they do it for a fee, and, but we do have a contract to dispose of our waste related to that. So that's why we can't go on a private property to collect that. But public property, we will respond for a public safety issue.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Anything else for Chief? Right, City Administrator, Clerk, Henry Velikor.
Thanks, Paul. My report is on page 23. Don't have a whole lot to share with you. Just a reminder that election's coming up on November 4th, or April 4th, November 4th, April 5th. Get my, yeah, that too. And encourage everyone to please get out and vote because of that election. Just a reminder, our meeting moves to Wednesday, April 6th, so please make note of that. One thing Justin did not mention, I just thought I'd put a plug in, he's trying to fill a part-time water department position, and his applications have kind of come wanting. Maybe Aaron and you could share some applications? I don't know, being serious. We, the position closes at the end of this week, I believe, and it's a very slim applicant pool. So folks out there listening, please check our website. The job announcement's up on the web, and hopefully we can generate some more interest for you on that. And then finally, the staff, department heads, we just started working on the update to our employee handbook. The handbook's a little over four years old, and we're going through it and going to be coming forward with some recommendations for some changes. I'm guessing it probably will take us four to six weeks to work through that, so you should see that sometime in May for just initial discussion and ultimately some changes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Henry. Any questions for Henry?
I have one question.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Henry, it's from Pryor, but just wanted to know if there was an update on the Theta Care at Work contract, if they accepted that with a lower percentage or not?
Oh, yes, they certainly did.
Okay.
Yep. And the mayor saw it and signed off on it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, which we have none, and to new business. First up is the aeration blower upgrade for the wastewater treatment plant. Justin?
Thanks, Paul. On page 170 is my memo, and 171 attached to that is the Focus on Energy Incentive paperwork, and behind that is a proposal from Kemfer and Associates, who's the engineering firm we typically use for our treatment plant projects. But as you can see, if you're following along with the memo, just a basic project timeline of how we got here, but I'd just kind of like to briefly go over, you know, our budget. When we sat down, well, last fall, you know, for this project, we only set aside $50,000. But what we're looking at for the total construction cost being roughly about $80,000, and engineering costs for Kemfer to continue on is just shy of $12,000. That doesn't fit in, but using the focus money to help bring that down. But what we're looking at, or what I'm, I want to do, is try and prioritize this project because I think it's a really good project. I mean, we're seeing payback in just over four years with just the energy savings. And the other projects we have on our list with the aeration diffusers, which are just little rubber membranes at the bottom of the tanks, we actually went ahead and purchased those, and we saved $18,000. Well, saved, but we budgeted 25. We only spent less than 7, so we actually almost broke an even just with our capital total budget right there. The corroge control project we're still working on, and like I said, I'll bring to you guys in maybe next month, and the Vector Dump Pad, I mean, so with this, this project alone, we didn't budget enough money. But it's one of those things where I think it's a high enough priority that we'll just, we'll just either push back the corroge control project or just kind of slim back that project is what I'm looking at, so. So overall, I mean, when you compare apples to apples, it looks like it's over, but with the savings and looking at our other projects where we've already found some savings and where we can potentially push back some of our other projects, I think this is one that we should move forward now. So just, I guess, kind of slowly, or just kind of going over review, we're just taking an older pump that's oversized, and we're just downsizing it. And with that, we're going to see about $17,000 in energy savings. Focus on Energy's going to chip in another $19,000, and I need to basically sign that incentive agreement in two days in order to be qualified to get that $19,000. So I need that approval tonight if we're going to see that focus money. Otherwise, well, we'll have to reapply for the focus money, and who knows what it's going to come in, but most likely something, something less, so. So with this project, you know, I'm just looking for approval to award basically the design bidding and construction inspection services to Kemfer and Associates for an amount not to exceed $11,700. I know that was kind of quick and dirty, but does anybody have any questions?
So, on the books right now, are, you're, what you're presenting to us now overall is a over-budget amount of about $4,300, and you indicated that the corrosion control or the other, the Vector Dump Pad would probably be scaled back in order to make up for that?
Yeah, that's exactly right. And we're more, just looking at the corrosion control because we came forward with that corrosion control just thinking, you know, we may, you know, we may go all out, we may not do anything this year. So that's why we've taken actually quite a long time just kind of doing research and seeing what's going to be all involved with that project. And I really haven't gone into much detail with that, and if, I guess I could now if you guys want to know what that's about before you make a decision.
Does anybody want more information on that? Okay. Not necessary, apparently. Any other questions?
I would like to see what the return on investment in less than five years, I think it's a well project.
Okay, anybody else? All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the awarding to the aeration blower upgrade project to the Kemfer and Associates for amount not to exceed $11,700 and to make up the difference in the way we stated it, the way Justin kind of plans to do it.
Okay.
Second.
Move by Dave Peterson, second by Keeland, that council award the aeration blower upgrade project design bidding and construction inspection services to Kemfer and Associates Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $11,700. Any more discussion? Okay, Sandy, I'll call the roll.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Perchatsky.
Aye.
And Steve Hackett.
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Andy. Item B is a special use permit, Courtside LLC, located at 2181 South Apple Tree Lane. Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President, member of council. This is, item starts on page 181. If you may recall, this item was pulled from the agenda two weeks ago and actually was sent back to the Plant Commission for consideration, further review. With that, I do want to say that the application that's in front of you is for a motor repair and detail shop out at the Courtside Bar and Grill. They are adding on to an existing garage that's currently out there and trying to add some additional business to the area and to the property. The executive summary that's in your packet has been reviewed by the Plant Commission. You know, it does outline a multitude of outstanding violations, concerns that staff had. Henry and myself met with Mr. Murphy and his attorney prior to the Plant Commission meeting last week, and at the end of my packet, which is on page 2, I want to say 200, is a memorandum of understanding between the city of Wapaka and Mr. Murphy. The big concern that we have out there right now is the hole that's in the existing motel that was caused by fire back in 2009. Mr. Murphy has agreed to deposit a $5,000 into a segregated account that will be held so that he has one year to fulfill that requirement of filling it or either re-roofing the motel or he does have further plans that he would like to do, but depending on the success of the auto repair will determine whether or not he proceeds forward those other plans. But at a minimum, the hotel will have one year to, one certificate of occupancy granted to the garage to close off the roof. There's a couple other outstanding issues that were approved by the Plant Commission, so staff does support this along with the Plant Commission, and just needs an approval from the council this evening.
Thanks, Brennan. Any questions, comments? Motion?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Courtside LLC and the city of Wapaka for the special use permit is outlined.
Move by Keeland, second by Olson, that council approve of the issuing of the special use permit to Courtside LLC. use permit to Courtside LLC, 2181 South Apple Tree Lane, subject to the, to the following of the conditions of the memorandum of understanding. Any more discussion?
The one discussion I would have is, you know, I went through this so many times and I just see that there's been, since 2005, I believe it was, that stuff has not been followed through and I'm wondering about this memorandum now, is that going to indeed be followed through with? So I do have a little question on that, there hasn't been any success in anything really prior. Brennan?
I don't disagree with your comments. Alderman and Chestnut, I, I believe that this is hopefully a happy medium, I would say, between the city and Mr. Murphy. He understands that if he does not follow through with the memorandum of understanding, his special use permit is revoked within one year. So he, he would have to shut down operations if he does not fulfill all the requirements. All the requirements that are in that memorandum of understanding basically clean up and clear out any of the existing outstanding issues that are out on the property. Ideally, I wouldn't, I would prefer not go on this route, but I think this is at least to help Mr. Murphy and the applicant at least get some business going out there to fulfill the existing requirements out there is a suitable compromise between the city and Mr. Murphy, but I believe that we have more teeth in it than we've had previously with the memorandum of understanding. And again, Mr. Murphy, you know, the, the main concern out there is the hole in the, is the motel, that has been the, that was the sticking point at council, that is the sticking point, or excuse me, at the Plan Commission, that was the sticking point with staff. And the fact that Mr. Murphy is depositing $5,000 into a escrow, escrowed account before we even issue any building permits does guarantee that we will have the money in, in the event that he does not fulfill that requirement within one year.
Anybody else? Okay Sandy, we have a motion in a second. Sandy will call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
No.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, one no, motion carried.
Thanks Sandy. Item C is license report number 1309 Arcade Amusement and Device License, Group One, Wisconsin LLC. Henry, this is you.
Yeah, page 202, pretty standard fare. At the last council meeting, you approved a new license for, I always want to call it Grand Seasons, the Ramada Inn, and this is one of the licenses that they've sought because they do have some gaming devices.
Okay, seems pretty straightforward. Anybody have any concerns or questions?
Are there gaming devices there now?
You know, I don't know. I haven't been, I haven't been in that hotel in a long time.
I haven't seen them there.
They still got the arcade?
The arcade is there?
Yeah.
Which is a couple like kids.
Yeah, which they would have to be licensed, yeah.
Okay.
It says gambling devices.
Um, Paul, according to their application, they have four gambling machines, one electronic dart ball and one pool table.
That's going to go in the tavern area, the bar area.
I don't know where they're putting it, but-
I just don't remember there being gambling machines there. I mean, I know there's amusement games, but I didn't know there was gambling machines there.
Remember that, that whole area used to be the Mexican restaurant and that's closed out and I think they're converting back to the bar. There is a business after five there next Tuesday, two weeks, or next week. And I'll check it out then.
I'm just not thrilled about proving new, what I, what I think, I'm not sure, new gambling machines.
Does it matter? I mean, if, even if there's none there right now, do they, it's, is it legal for them to put new ones in?
Well, that's always a sticky question. I think it's how you respond to that. I might want to defer to the city attorney and the, and the chief. We passed an ordinance not to regulate them, it is a state function now, correct? Department of Revenue?
Right, but they're not legal, they are illegal, but it's a matter of who can enforce it. If it's less than five, it'd be, the state basically enforces it, if they're more than five, then we can under a felony charge. So they carry five or less, they're still illegal, but the state is responsible for enforcing it. And they, they have removed this option for local municipalities to enforce it for an obvious reason, so, yeah.
So the reason it's on our agenda tonight is just so we can approve the collection of the fees?
Right. Yeah, I think it's a hundred dollars per machine.
It's a hundred dollars per gambling machine and then 20 for the others.
So we're not, we're not approving the machines as being legal or illegal, we're just allowing the city to collect the fees on them.
Make a motion, we approve license report number 1309.
I'll second that.
Moved by Hackett, second by Whitman, that we approve license report number 1309 Arcade and Amusement Device License for Group One, Wisconsin LLC. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion?
Hey.
Okay.
Who's the name?
There's two.
All right, motion passes eight to two. Next we have license report number 1310 Operators License, Licenses, I think. Turn page 203, I think these are pretty straightforward. Chief, any comments? Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Moved by Dave Peterson, second by Jillian Peterson, that council approves number, license report number 1310 Operators Licenses. Any more discussion? Or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carries. We have no issues or projects to discuss. Item 11 is a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with 19.85 Parent One Parent E Wisconsin statute, says it pertains to negotiating the purchase of public property within the City of Wapaka Business Technology, Technology Park, TID 3.
Could make that before we move.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we convene into closed session. Is that a, is that a voice? Okay, that's a roll call vote, Sandy will take the roll.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay. We're going into closed session, so everybody that is not part of the council or city staff will have to leave. Please.